Jen Nelson is online, thank you. She's the Board of Development Specialist for OSBA that is here to present OSBA's proposal to potentially help us in our search for a new superintendent. So thanks for joining us Jen tonight on such short notice, appreciate it.
Of course, are you ready for me to go ahead and go with the presentation?
Absolutely.
Alright, let me go ahead and start sharing. And I will try and go through this as quickly as possible, I know that you have some time constraints. So let me get, uh, let's see. See if I can share this. Nope, that's not the right screen.
It's a nice picture.
That is a beautiful picture.
Thank you. Let's try this again. Alright, that should be on screen too. Alright. There we go, are you looking at my title screen for Executive Search Services?
We are.
Yay, okay, good. So I'm gonna go ahead and start this, thank you, my name is Jen Nelson, I am with the Oregon School Board Association. I am a Board Development Specialist, I've been with the team for about three years, serving as an administrative assistant and now as a board specialist. And prior to that, I have also served as a board secretary for eighteen plus years. Um, I have been working with the search services on the administrative side and now I am also doing this consulting as well and facilitating these searches. Um, I've been doing it since I've started here and I really enjoy this work. Um, one of the most important things about um, our work that we, the reason why we find it so important is that there is a lot of research that goes into saying that the tenure uh, of a, your superintendent in your districts is directly correlated with the superintendent, uh, with positive impact on students, as well as the quality relationship between the board and the superintendent. So recruiting and finding and retaining the most effective educational leader for your district will really improve student success and that is why it's so important to us. Um, we do with all of our training and um, per board development that we do, we go from the research-based balanced governance approach, so we incorporate that as well into our searches for your superintendent. Um, it's really important that there are effective partnerships between the board and the superintendent, that there's mutual trust and respect, um, and that you all have a shared vision and mutual accountability so that some of the things that we really bring into it right from the start with creating and building those relationships during the search process. Um, this is just a highlight overview of our search process, I'm gonna go in a little more detail with them shortly here, but I just wanted to show you that the planning process begins, um, where we kind of set those parameters and set a search calendar for all the meetings that we're going to need to incorporate into your regular schedule. Um, and then we will go through the process of setting the qualifications through community engagement and adopting some qualities and qualifications that we will use to as the basis for our search and advertising, to make sure that we get somebody in there that is gonna meet everything that you need for your district. And there's a lot of ways that we can incorporate staff and community into that process so that they have some ownership and input um, to give to the board on that. Um, then next we'll do advertising, once we develop those qualities and qualifications and everything you're looking for, for that perfect candidate to be successful at your district, we'll go ahead and advertise, we'll create a fully digital marketing flyer for you, which you can share in your own ways, but we also have lots of different places with direct mailing, social media accounts, and other platforms and affiliated um, association websites that we post all of these on and we have a nationwide um, influence but mostly directed towards the Pacific Northwest. Um, after we've recruited candidates and they've applied in our confidential portal, then we will start working on screening those applicants and candidate profiles. Um, we can incorporate staff and community in here again at this point in the process, where we will have them assist the board with screening applications and making sure that everything that's been submitted aligns with those qualities and qualifications that you're looking for and ranking them based on whether they meet those qualities and qualifications. Um, then we'll move into the interview process, uh, the board will conduct these interviews, we can be there to assist you as far as process and any kind of questions you might have for that, but it's, we do give you some training ahead of time before you walk into those interviews and assist you with some of those question building too. So we do support you along the way to make sure that you're ready to go into those interviews and fully qualified to do that process. Um, and then we have the selection uh, of, based on those initial interviews, you'll select your finalists. We have a finalist process that we set up where you have a day in the district and some other things to kind of learn about those top candidates for the position as you're working through. And, and then once you have selected someone and you have them on contract, we also offer post transitional services to develop that relationship that we said is so important between the board and their, your new executive. Um, after the contract has begun and you've started work for the next six months, we, we kind of come in there and we have some things and I'll, I'll give you some more details about that transition plan service that we provide, it's all part of the um, contract services. Um, because of this process, we are really proud of um, our retention. Uh, we have an eighty-five percent for uh, our candidates that have been selected with districts at a five-year retention and we have yet to have one of those guarantee claims of a superintendent leaving within the first year. Again, this is really key to this process and the whole way through and even after is the relationships between the board and the staff, community, our association, the new superintendent, the candidates and students, we just work to facilitate all of those relationships as we go out that process so that it feels good for everyone. So a little more detail about that planning phase that I mentioned. Um, this is where we're gonna develop that search calendar and try and coordinate everything with the meetings that you already have, because it's a lot of work and it goes over a period of time, so we want to ensure that we're not overworking everyone and that we're incorporating it to meetings that you're already planning on. Um, we conduct a salary analysis for you, we, uh, you will declare the vacancy if you haven't done so already in a formal way, and then we'll kind of, oops, start with that advertising and those application requirements. Um, the community engagement part, after that first planning session where we've established everything as for uh, for the calendar, we'll go ahead and go in and begin engaging the community in the best way that you feel um, would be, but generally it starts with a qualities and qualification survey that we put out a link for a couple of weeks and uh, we just get some feedback from your staff, parents, students, community members about what they think would be a great um, characteristics and skills for the next incoming superintendent to have. Uh, we use those from the survey to have meetings with you, sometimes uh, some people like to have some focus groups if you already have a committee that's kind of developed for assisting with the superintendent's search process um, or uh, community focus groups, we do offer that service if you'd like that. But generally, we use the information from the survey and we provide that report to you so that you can develop and adopt those qualities and qualifications, which will help you develop based on the survey results. Um, and then once we have everything, the advertising, as I said, we'll go ahead and we'll create all of your flyers and marketing. We have a communications team that assists us to make sure that we get these things out to everyone in a direct way and also on postings. And if you want more information about what those audiences look like, I can provide those to you. Um, as I said, we usually have a national reach, but we focus more so on the western half of the United States. Uh, one thing to note is that we don't select candidates and bring them forward to you. Um, we have that screening process in place for the board and anybody you appoint on that screening panel to kind of make those decisions, uh, and we'll facilitate that with you, but we really like you to have the say in who you think will be the best fit to bring in for interviews. Um, application screenings, we will train you and your screening panel members on how to go through and what to look for through the application process and the materials that we've requested from the candidates. Um, we'll provide that training and we'll give specific directions and materials and rating sheets so that you can conduct those rankings and um, debrief each other on what you think about those employees before that interview selection happens. Um, we'll have the first round of interviews, often lately they've been conducted, a lot of people ask if they're in-person or virtual, it's up to the board, but generally a lot of people have been doing virtual ones on this first round, um, simply because you may have some candidates from out of state and um, just to save costs on bringing people in, sometimes it's helpful to have that first interview online. Um, and then you'll deliberate and identify your finalists. Um, that finalist phase, as I said, we have that day in the district where you, um, we'll do some reference checks and things in the background before they even come um, to the district. We have full days planned for that and we will be there onsite to assist you through all of that um, site visits, meeting, key staff, and then having the staff uh, debrief the board on their interactions before you go into those final interviews at the end of the day. A lot of times people ask about the travel costs and the cost, we did in the proposal that we sent to you, I'm sure that's been shared with all of you, we did give the base fee, which is based on your enrollment size for the entire package, including that transition plan afterwards. But this is what it would typically look like as far as our travel rates, if you did need to invite us to come out to the district, um, it would be based on this and where the consultant's location is. Um, once we have the final selection, uh, you'll have your contract negotiation, we'll assist you with the announcement and um, uh, press releases for the information and then you can book to approve the contract. That's all part of the final selection process at the end. And then after you have someone on board and contract is signed and you're bringing them on, then we come in and we will give you six hours of training um, with the board and the superintendent on things like communication protocols, roles and responsibilities, the expectations, um, the board's role and the superintendent's role and the superintendent evaluation and we have tools for that as well. And we also provide some mentoring um, during that time, just to kind of get everybody into their new roles and make sure that you're on the right path uh, for a successful relationship. Um, again, just bringing in the fact that the relationships are really important, we want to have a way that we're bringing in community, bringing in staff, this is an important hire, this is one of the most important jobs that the board has um, to do, is hiring that superintendent and evaluating them. So during this process of the search, we really hope that you want to include input from various places who are going to have interactions with this new superintendent to make sure that everyone feels that their input is heard and that they have a place in the process so that they have some say on what that's gonna look like when that new person comes on and they will all have to interact with them. Um, so that is the quickest version I could do for you, I know that we have some time and you have some others coming in, so I just, I'm gonna leave it there and see if you have any questions after that speed-through version.
My, my question would be just based off the dates that you have kind of in your proposal, we're already kind of behind the curve, are we in a spot where we're not too behind the curve?
I don't think that you're too behind the curve, we have a couple of other searches that are beginning around this time and really the, the primary work that's gone into things up to this point has been that qualities and qualifications um, development, we can expedite that into getting the survey out in a couple of weeks, get that information back, report to the board, develop those. And then the turnaround time for us to get those marketing materials out can be relatively quick as well. The only thing we would need from the district would be some video, or some photos that are approved, uh, to be used in marketing materials and just some basic information that we ask, we have a form you can fill out and then we go from there and we build it out with our communications. So I don't think that we're too far behind the game. Um, we have a few right now that are closing up with their application process and they're just beginning to start screening, so we would just be about four weeks behind there, so. And I think we still have time to push that out.
It's a similar time.
It is similar timing to when you hired Rachel.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Then, um, Jen, if we were to go with OSBA, do we know who our consultant would be, our executive search consultant? Or is that yet to be determined?
Um, it may yet to be determined because based on workload of what other consultants have, but really we two, have primarily two, myself and Vince Adams that would conduct the searches. And usually what you're doing is you're kind of hiring the team. We can say that one person's gonna be assigned to you, but really we all work together and we also have an additional person who is an independent contractor that has been working with us for a while, that if we need some coverage, we'll kind of send them out on different things that we feel that they can cover with us. So really what I would say is that if you hire us, you're getting like essentially four people, not just Vince, myself and Kevin, we also have our administrative analyst who helps us with kind of backend stuff that, all the logistical stuff so that we don't put pressure on your district staff for the things that need to happen and communications.
Okay, good, thank you.
Any other?
Any?
I don't, I don't have any questions.
One last, Jennifer, could you go back to the travel fee line? Real quick, I suppose a lot of what you'll do with us is probably via Zoom, but I'm sure there'll be a couple of times where you'll need to be here.
Yes, um, I will say that we have been doing a lot of virtual items for most of the process, it's been able to be covered by Zooming and especially with some of the more remote districts that we've been working with. Um, generally we say really the only time that it's super important for us to kind of be there is we like to be there if you want us to, when you're doing the interview process, even though those interviews will be uh, virtual, we can be there virtually however you want us, or if you want us in the room to kind of um, make sure that everyone's staying in line. Uh, but the primary time that we would say really is necessary for us to kind of be there in person would be that day in the district and finalist forum and just making sure that we have everything going the way it's supposed to during the day and that we're kind of running that for you to make sure it goes smoothly.
Okay.
Sounds reasonable. Alright Jen, uh, thank you so much for your presentation, uh, we are holding a brief uh, meeting tomorrow night to make a decision on which uh, consulting firm we're gonna go with, so that we can get the process started right away.
That sounds great.
We'll be attached.
Thank you very much, enjoy your time tonight and uh, we look forward to hearing from you.
Thank you.
Thank you Jen.
Bye.
Is the other company gonna come?
Yes.
He's here.
This is logged in.
There he is, okay. Great.
You ready for?
Right for him. Yeah, 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 okay, let's go. Alright, Dr. Hess, can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah, I can hear you.
Alright, welcome, we're running a little ahead of schedule, so. If you're ready.
That's always a great thing to be. So, um, I had a, a couple of other helpers that um, may or, you may or may not see them in the waiting room, so. If uh, one of them is Brian Starr, he's a retired superintendent and he actually lives up near the Mount Angel School District, uh, near that area.
He was he was, his principal.
Yeah, he used to work here.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, so he was, um, so he may be joining on, he sent me a text message, so he might be popping in. And another um, person that has helped us with the searches is Kathy Horowitz, she's also retired superintendent, so. Um, if you see either of them in the waiting room, you can let them on in. And we have a, I have a little slideshow here, can I share my screen?
Yep.
Alright. So appreciate the opportunity to uh, talk about our, talk about our process and um, give you all the information you need to make a a good decision for your district. So we've been engaged with uh, with, we've probably done around ten searches so far throughout, over the last three or four years and uh, and most of our, our expertise is with smaller school districts, so. Many, my, Mount Angel is, is right in our wheelhouse, we, we did one last a spring with North Marion School District, which is a neighbor of yours. And there's Brian's iPhone, he's, he's there. So we, we, what we like to call our process is what we call a super search and probably the best way for me to tell you about it is actually show you, I've got a little brief um, video that kind of talks about our process, so it's about three minutes, so, uh, do you mind if I play that for you?
Go for it.
Okay, hopefully all the sound and everything will work, can you see it okay?
Not quite yet.
Not quite yet, so, sometimes you have to reorientate the, the, the sharing here. We'll go to share this one and...
Yeah, now we see something.
Okay, great. Alright, we'll hit play.
At Breakthrough Consulting, we have perfected the superintendent's search process and we know how important it is for you to find the right candidate for your district who will be a good fit for the board and the community for years to come. Hiring a superintendent is the most important and lasting job the school board can do.
Our one job is to find the next superintendent for the school board and we do that through a variety of activities that we go through with the school board. Um, we individually interview each board member to get a sense of what they're looking for. We also interview the board as a whole, how they work as a team. But the one thing we don't do is we do not market a candidate. We have the board to select the best candidates from the pool that we generate.
To get started, we interview every school board member on your team to learn about district priorities and values and needs and the characteristics they are looking for in their next leader. Our team has a combined one hundred years of experience in public education and utilizing our vast network of local, state and national contacts, we are able to attract quality and qualified candidates to become your next superintendent.
At Breakthrough Consulting, we provide a menu approach for the school board to make decisions. One of the processes is screeners. The screeners are elected or nominated by the community, by the school board. Those scores then are compiled from each of the screeners and the board then gets to look at those and make a decision as to who comes forward for the interviews.
Every super search ends with visitation day and on that day, the candidates come to the district and interact with students, staff, community members in a variety of settings and the board observes this. And the reason why that's so important is finding that next great leader is more than answering a set of interview questions, it's about fit and connection. And at the community forum, these candidates present who they are as a leader and then they respond to questions from the community and then the community gets to provide feedback on who they think is a great fit for the district and the board gets to reveal all that before making their final decision. Because every board has one job to do when it comes to finding a superintendent, that's finding the best person. And it's our job at BTC to help them do that. When you consult with BTC, we'll help you make the right decision because we're here to help.
Alright. So, we'll go back to the... Close this. Okay, uh, do you see the slides now?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. So, um, from the proposal that, that we sent over, you can see that there's a menu of services, so you kind of based on the, what, what your, your budget range is, we can kind of customize what components you want in your search. So that's one of the things that we think is important is to work with you, the board, on what you're looking for. And um, and what makes our process different, um, what we feel is that we understand that we're working for the board and that you control the process that you want to use and the scope of work you want done. And then we provide the expertise in terms of uh, helping you with the process. So, uh, some boards like to have a more uh, smaller process where there's just a few people involved. Other boards like to get a lot of the community involved and usually you'll have, especially in smaller communities, a lot of people that want uh, to weigh in and, and meet the candidates and, and help, help give you feedback. But then, at the end of the day, it's the board's decision on who they hire. So you'll get at least uh, two of us to work with you, um, and, and we'll always be uh, close by your side through the whole thing. And our searches are also guaranteed and what that means is if the candidate that you select doesn't make it through um, the first year's contract, then the next search will do for you without uh, without charge. Or if you, we, we go through the process and you don't like any of the candidates, we'll do, we'll, we'll, we'll extend the process, we'll keep working with you at the one fixed price, we won't uh, change that until you find someone that, that is um, your candidate of choice. And we also include um, coaching support, if that's something that you're interested in, we can help with that. We don't really do a contract negotiation because we, we see ourselves really working with the board in this process and then um, usually a superintendent who they get, who, when they get hired, they'll, they usually have someone that kind of helps them negotiate their contracts, so. The board will usually have someone that they elect to work with, whoever that person is and you'll most likely get your attorney involved and things like that to get that contract process done. But we'll take you right up to that step. So our process develops really good candidates because we tailor our plan for your community. And the first thing we would do is build your timeline, so you'll tell us about when you'd like to get finished. And we've, we've done processes, I think the, the shortest process we've done was about fifty, fifty-eight days and anywhere from, you know, three months, you know, somewhere in that range from two to three months is about what it takes to do a complete process. So we plan that out and I'm glad you're working ahead to get... We also do a survey that enables you as the board and the screeners to kind of see what's important in your community and then match up the candidates with the ideas from the community survey. And uh, so you'll get all that data, will all be part of the service. And then the, the final thing that we recommend is a community, a community forum where anyone from the community can meet the candidates, learn about who they are as a leader and provide feedback to the board and then the board will do that final interview and make their decision. We also create a custom-built uh, advertising flyer that has the links to the survey, the timeline and um, is real transparent process all the way through. So, we've got a lot of happy customers that we've worked with before and you're welcome uh, to contact any of them that we've, we've worked with if you want uh, contact information from different folks, I believe I sent you that. And you basically have one job to do when it comes to hiring a superintendent, that's find someone that will be a, a great fit for the community. So, I would like to close with just another quick video that shows um, some testimonies from board members there up in North Marion, uh, North Marion. And so I'll click on this and hopefully the tuck will work again and... Alright, can you see that?
Yeah.
Okay, having just concluded a superintendent search and, and I believe successfully, I would like to say thank you to Breakthrough Consulting and Dr. Hess and to say, maybe not seamless, but it certainly was easier than it would have been without it. And I know from receiving texts over the weekend, Saturdays, Sundays, he was working uh, almost day and night on our behalf and we are most appreciative of the results. So, uh, thank you, Dr. Hess, very much.
So we've just concluded, um, I think our superintendent's search, I feel like it's been really successful. The whole process was easy, uh, Dr. Hess walked us through very simply what to do. He put the board in charge with that, which I really appreciate and I think this is gonna be a great, a great thing. So if you're thinking about using Breakthrough Consulting, absolutely ten out of ten, recommend.
Hi, I'm Crystal Ross, so I'm the Vice Chair of North Marion School District and I just want to let you know that we um... And I just want to let you know that we um just finished our superintendent search with Breakthrough Consulting. One of the greatest things about the process was how involved the board was. By um from the beginning to the middle to the end, the board could pivot at any point and they would keep up with us. Um it gave us the ability to feel confidence in our decision. Um in the beginning, we had the screening selection committee. We were involved, we were able to select a group of stakeholders that were involved and we still had private executive session discussions. Um one of the things I valued most was their communication style. It was any time of any day I could contact them, even if I had heartburn over a decision or a question and they would talk us through it, they could also pivot and work it into it. And the night before the interview, it's a lot of the news broke regarding financial issues within the school districts. I contacted Rob that evening and felt like we needed more budgetary comments on our interviews. He instantly replied back and by the next morning I had a copy of the interview questions with those additions. It's that kind of detailed work that you need when you're looking for a superintendent and it's exactly what we got. Um ten out of ten, recommend fantastic work from start to finish, Rob and his team, fantastic. You can go with them, they would guide you, lead you, but ultimately as the board you made the decision and I loved it. I was really worried going into a superintendent search and I feel a hundred percent confident that we would use them again.
Alright, so that is that's what we have for you and now, any questions?
Right, good questions for Dr. Hess.
No, they have broken down pretty well, I don't have anything.
We got uh, we got the rolling.
I do have to say he's very quick on on the response, I sent him an email Sunday night and Monday, Monday morning he gave gave us this information right here, so the response was quick. Okay, you're good?
Yeah.
Alright, looks like no questions, you did a good job with the detailed description and the information that you sent us, so thank you so much. And that we are going to be discussing and and holding a meeting tomorrow night to make our decision on who we're gonna go with because we gotta get, as you know, get get rolling in this process as soon as possible, so we will be in contact.
He's got his microphone.
Yeah, Dr. Hess, could you hear?
Can you chat in the line?
I think he's muted.
Oh, I'm sorry, I don't know how much of those uh that random video, you know how YouTube just keeps playing sometimes?
No, we didn't see any of that.
Oh, okay, uh yeah, I apologize, it was uh it was um some slow jazz and I was trying to get it to stop, so.
We we didn't see any of that, but I just I just uh mentioned to the board that, you know, you're very responsive at uh when I sent you that email on Sunday night. You got back to me right away on Monday morning with this information, we don't have any questions for you because what you said was very detailed. Very, yeah, very thorough on uh exactly what you offer in in the cost breakdown. And uh we'll be discussing and making a decision, uh we'll be holding our road tomorrow night so that we can uh get that uh decision made as soon as possible, so we can get the process started as soon as possible, so we will be in in contact with you.
Well, that's great, that's great, well, thanks for um inviting us to to your board meeting, we'd love to serve your community and I, yeah, I think that's one thing for sure you can count on us is um we'll do everything we can to help you make the right, the best, the best decision for you and and um including being really ultra-responsive and supportive and um, you know, we would, we'll have if you go with our firm, the first thing we'll do is come to a a work session and and iron out all the details. Like exactly when you want to start, when you want to finish and what, how, what, how you want to do the process. And we'll get all those dates booked in and we don't, we do a lot of the work ourself, well, we do all the work ourselves, we'll we'll probably have, we would, we would have one person in contact with your district office that will like help get things on the website and things like that, but as far as like the work and contacting the people and doing the reference checks and the background checks and all of that is uh we take care of, so.
Great.
Alright, and Brian's on the phone, Brian's, Brian there, he's, looks like he's on his phone, but um he's he's there as well, so.
Awesome, alright, thank you.
Alright, well, thank you and uh and good luck on your um whoever you select and thanks for the opportunity to uh present.
Well, thanks for for attending today.
Bye bye.
Alright. I have some questions.
Yes.
Yeah, so I've never been involved in a superintendent search, not at this level, I've been, I've never, most of who did you use last time?
Yeah, Teresa and I were.
Yeah, we were the ones that were on it and I was very happy with.
And Steve was great, they have different.
Yeah, different people. Yeah, but he was great, it was very smooth and we had like twenty-seven candidates that we start for, yeah, we had to look over twenty-seven and we did the community thing, we have members of the community, administrators. I think there was a teacher, a couple of teachers, but I mean, they were like our screening one and they went through all the applications too and gave us feedback.
They they observed the initial interview, yeah, so um yes, the process. I would imagine we're probably gonna adopt a very similar process and they both.
So the BTC gives us more like different choices.
It is, but when I started comparing them, they were very
Yeah.
Similar in what they're, you mean, line by line.
Yeah, yeah.
The the costing actually, when you add the things to OSBA, it's giving us, it comes out just a touch higher than OSBA, but it all kind of even out.
Yeah, 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 because uh BTC doesn't include in their base price, which you all saw, the the community visitation number eight, which I think is a. Survey and and um I think that's valuable, I, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Although, I mean, I wonder how much has changed in four years about people's sentiments on.
Well, there is lots of changes like that.
Rachel's leadership, I mean, we've changed a lot.
You've changed a whole lot, I, the only thing that I was involved in is I went to the community meeting when you had the two superintendents go speak.
Yeah.
And then you both, then you kind of gave your input on a piece of paper and that was it.
And then we got to, as a school board, we got to read all, because they're on the low cards or whatever, and then we all just kind of read it quietly and passed it around and just looked over all the comments and everything that they had to say, and I think there were some people that submitted comments via the Zoom, because that was available for people to listen in on the interview too, so.
They offer the exact same things, I I'm I'm a numbers person and so OSBA offers the community survey along with the community visitation day.
Yeah, yeah.
And if you look down at the one-year priority, they should executive, right, coaching. OSBA offers six months of that board development.
Yeah.
And and they're not offering that in there as well, so those are three big items that I think that are really important to us and the the cost breakdown there.
If you're having just a community visitation, you're at eleven to fifty.
Yes. And then with that leadership.
Leadership is another thirteen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we had a really good experience with OSBA, yeah, Rachel, and I appreciate BTC presenting and I think with any executive search company that we would partner with, we're gonna get very similar experience, right, and services and so being is a good.
And do we know what we have for a budget for this process?
That's an excellent question.
Yeah, I, you know, I don't remember.
I don't remember what like. I don't know if they were told that we just.
Yeah, it wasn't an issue that they over. It didn't become a big issue.
But but again, budget conscious, knowing where we are.
Well, but you know, when you look, so but that, but OSBA is that cost does not include any of their travel.
Which is an estimated two days.
Yeah, yeah, so you're adding up almost one grand.
Yeah, true.
I don't think we should.
They're still pretty.
Either one.
They're still pretty fair.
I I I think the cost is gonna be washed out in the end, whatever you choose.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, you can't pick pinch pennies because either way it's gonna go, so it's just the decision of who we want. And I am comfortable with whatever the board decides.
Yeah, I don't have a strong preference, I will disclose that I know Kevin Nury, he and I have worked together. Um I really like him, um and so he's, and that I, that's just a personal.
And we know Brian Star that's with the other. I I didn't know because he was principal when Robbie was there and then I would run into him every once in a while at Safeway in Silverton. Hi, how you doing?
The one thing that struck me about the BTC was that when he said, well, you've done like ten searches in the last four years.
Yeah.
It's just not a lot. It's a small, it's a small organization, I'm sure it's very good and it's very valuable.
Well, I think they're all over the place though, because the original letter we got from the BTC that went to all of us, I looked it up online and they like must be their corporate office or whatever is in Virginia. I mean, this says Corvallis, but I'm just saying, you know, so this could be their little. Yeah, maybe it was else LLC or something, but I mean, I just looked from what they gave, you can find it listed both places, but I went by because it, was it this guy that contacted us the first time to send it to all of us?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I'm ready to make a decision and go with the next steps because we've just gotta move on it, I mean, you know, there's just a lot of next steps. And what else, Teresa and.
If I was to vote, I would go with OSBA because I was so pleased with their whole process and that's what I lean towards, just because the comfort we had and I think they have the most experience.
And well, we can't make a decision now in the work session, but we can talk about.
We can talk about. Say what we think, yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I'm with OSBA because we we did have a great, we had a great experience with them last year.
Okay, so I too support your decision that OSBA and uh but I am comfortable with if the board so chooses to go the other group, I could live with that also.
Yeah, I think both would do this.
You know, both would do as well, I'm just nervous on getting the process started
Yeah.
and getting a move on it, I mean, that's unlike the, okay, where where's the next twenty steps?
And when I sort of, like when he said the shortest one was fifty-eight, so and then I went well, I am going to Europe April first and I will be gone through the twelve, so it's okay, because I'll be done, I'll be all better by then. I know, I want to be a part of the whole, so you know, it's kind of hard to do when you're, I mean, if I was just in California or something.
Difference, I do want to uh say this out loud, one difference between BTC and our experience with OSBA. They said they will do the reference checks, we did the reference checks last time and.
It it does say on OSBA that they.
They do.
Listen, no, no, it says.
Teresa and I did.
I did that. But that was just research in my mind.
It was also, we did the reference checks on the background.
Even if OSBA does the reference checks, I'm not comfortable with just taking the word of somebody versus us doing some of that ourselves.
I didn't mind doing the
You know.
reference check.
It's just another step.
So Rachel, how did you point out about applying to this job through OSBA?
Uh COSA.
COSA? Because they're gonna post in COSA, OSBA will post in, oh, they'll post in COSA.
And yes, the reference check phase is very important.
The reference check is a make me or break me.
But anyway, that was another difference, but yeah, I would be, I mean, I I agree with Teresa that our experience with OSBA was quite positive, so and they
My theory is it's not broke, why try to fix it? So tomorrow night at six thirty, we will.
I have a hard time getting on Zoom, I'm gonna leave my, I'm gonna leave my laptop with Jill and see.
Do we wanna do it?
You wanna try, you can.
Because I can't, because I'm gonna leave my laptop with Jill anyway, take it up tomorrow. Do you have like an iPhone, do you? I I guess I could, I could do it on my phone, but that's what I'm gonna do, but I'm gonna leave it. There's gonna be a lot of Zoom meetings and
Yeah.
Remember the last time, it's not, it's not on the system, it's not on this computer or it never has been.
I'll fix that.
Because Jill said, oh no, Irene, you, it's on here and she's like, like, and she goes, no, wait, this is wrong.
While while we're meeting tomorrow night and making a decision, do we want to declare officially declare the vacancy too? Because I know that's a step that we need to make before we enter into a contract.
Yes.
So maybe it's a two-step decision, Jill's not here, she probably, she probably has it on the agenda.
I don't, but I'm gonna put it on there right now.
Because I think that is part of the.
It's posted, so I'll just adjust the agenda.
Somebody did submit their letter of resignation.
Yes.
Yeah. And then declare the vacancy, yeah, make it official.
Okay, so then I'm just gonna push it some more, so we we were done tomorrow.
And what else, Irene, to leave some of your question, answer some of your questions, I shared with Andy, the the timeline that we used.
Thank you.
And then that way, that'll give us an idea and it's gonna be very similar this time.
That's perfect, that's good.
I went into my archives and I.
Oh, bless you. Our hope is that we can find somebody as wonderful as Rachel, I don't know if that's a possibility, but we're gonna try.
Oh, darn well, we're gonna try.
There are plenty of things that need to be worked on that I didn't have the skill set for.
Okay, so Rachel, while we have you in work session, what are some of the things that you see are are big things that you believe that this group has to, you know, continue with? Because we've made a lot of progress, but what do you see as things that are working and things that need to be pushed or things that are maybe Rachel wasn't as effective as she thought she should be?
Well, I would say technology is an area where I think just about anyone stepping in might have a stronger skill set than I did. Wasn't something I was afraid of, but it just wasn't my knack.
Your predecessor did not have that.
What do you mean, technology, can you go in over there?
Sure, like um it just is always a little awkward for me, it doesn't happen smoothly for me and um I make it work, you know, I make it work, but I'm not real tech savvy, if that makes any sense.
That's where you go, Scott.
And that's why we have Scott, but also I think one thing to keep in mind is that there's a hole right now as far as technology education. And so that's something to consider, especially now that we're one-to-one school district. Uh but that would be a new thing in terms of things that need to continue, I I think it's very important to continue to push inclusiveness, inclusivity for all students, uh continuing to better understand each other and working with the demographics in our community. Uh RTI, response to intervention, we're finally getting to a place where we can start seeing movement. So that would be something that I hope would continue. Um so those would be the big ones, professional learning communities ties in very strongly with with response to intervention. So um those would be the big three.
You always spoke, you spoke about curriculum and instruction.
Yeah.
So you need, I remember when Teresa and I spoke with you, that you spoke about the need for somebody that is well-versed in curriculum and instruction versus the administrators kind of running over the superintendent. If that person is not, you know, knows their stuff, so to speak, what, help me to understand more of that curriculum instruction.
So we have um, I I believe a wonderful rarity in Mount Angel that all three of our principals are very strong, savvy instructional leaders. And that doesn't always happen, sometimes you can hire an administrator, a school administrator who's a great manager but doesn't have the instructional leadership skills. We know based on more than ten years of data, that instruction was something that that was a hole here, we know. That was a hole here, we know that not having strong accountability was part of that. Someone who would come in as an instructional leader understands accountability, is not afraid of accountability and embraces accountability. So, and that is something that after working with our school administrators now for a couple of years, two to three years. They want that, they're hungry for that, they're hungry for data. So that's just something to keep in mind. If that makes sense.
And the one thing I thought of that Rachel has done a great job of. That we need to think about too, is we've got another summer plus of homework to be done and. Kudos to Rachel for stepping into that in this job and, you know, not expecting that when you were hired. And having to do all that work in the summer to keep things on track and not just summer, but you know, the time since we've started. As board, that's gonna be a piece. That your. Your replacement is going to have to also.
Continue.
Continue, you know, because we've got the remainder of the bottom work, but then we've also got the new um. JFK.
Science, science.
Yeah, that's gonna continue, so.
Yeah.
Another skill set that.
Another skill set.
Someone will have to at least be comfortable with to jump into.
So what were your big ahas when you first came to Mount Angel, because you've really moved the district along to a really higher level, a positive level. You've kind of put the right people on driving the buses, I mean, you've done a lot of stuff, so. What were your ahas, like as a small district, as a small community, uh, you know, and you were. An outsider, how did that all fit in? I mean, it did, because you clearly did a wonderful job, but you know, what are your?
I believe that sometimes it takes an outsider to move things along if there's too much comfort. Because there was such a long time without. Strong accountability, I think that that, that showed.
A lot of rocks had, had not been.
A lot of molten rocks.
Even approached, much less turned over, carpet.
So that was a huge aha for me and much to my delight, actually, because that's an area that I really love, it's a passion for me, so. That was a big aha, the, the assessment data supported. That there were huge holes and some accountability issues and that um. Teaching and learning needed to strengthen through, through a system, through something that everyone understood. Which for us in Mount Angel has been lately response to intervention and PLCs. Systems, not everyone doing their own thing, we just can't be um, independent contractors anymore with a common parking lot. Doesn't, doesn't work that way for kids anymore.
And I've always done it like that, now you want me to like work as a team, that's hard.
Well, and you know, we've seen what Rachel has done and she's exactly right, there was. Few systems that everybody was on board with, I think that's the big takeaway is everyone was doing their own thing and now. You brought accountability to that teamwork when bringing it forward. I think that's a big thing, um, I think, but that's a very important thing, that the next person's gonna have to continue on to make it. Worthwhile for our students to continue learning.
And I think of all that you've done with Studer and. Don't wanna see that go to waste, you know, yeah.
That's really true, we're finishing up year two and just getting to. The really cool part of plan, do, study, act cycles and what, how that can move improvement along.
Do we have a contract with Studer for next year?
Not yet.
Okay. I wonder when we could, I'm just guessing, I'm thinking about to ensure some stability and accountability, when. Could we possibly? Have, you know, begin to have a conversation with Studer, like contract for next year, so the new, when the new superintendent comes on board. That's not like, hey, I'm not doing this, or I'm doing now, I'm gonna go with not Studer, but X, Y, Z, that we have that contin, that continuity. I mean, that's kinda like what I'm, we're like on a good roll, I mean, we have a, a great superintendent, we have a really good school board, we have good leadership. And things are like hugely just on that roll and we can't have it stop, so that's where I'm like, would Studer consider a contract for next year?
Oh, sure, that could happen at any time.
Maybe, yeah, maybe that's something that I think that we can support before you leave this year, that we kinda have something going on for next year.
Yeah, a few bridges of continuity.
Yes.
Be, because when a new superintendent comes. There's gonna be some changes they will want to be making fairly quickly, maybe, and. Maybe not, and so setting up a few expectations of. You know, from, from the board's perspective of, of what we, what, from our opinion.
Right.
This gets a bit into the operations where we don't belong, but just sharing our observations about how.
Things are working.
How well we see the momentum is going in the right direction in certain areas.
How things are working well, and if you're uh, in my opinion, if you're a pretty savvy superintendent, you're not gonna muck everything up when you come in right away.
Yeah.
There might be some tweaks, changes, or some new ideas, but you're not gonna. So, you know, because that, yeah, you wanna find out what's working, what's been working. That's right, cause I see that, that's what you've done, Rachel, you've pushed every year a little more and a little more and a little more and you know, and. Yeah.
Move the pebble, keep moving the pebble.
That pebble gets bigger.
Good.
Well, not good. Not good, not good. As good as.
Yeah, yeah.
Are you, are you thinking of doing something else after you retire? Like working for Studer or anything?
I actually have been approached by a, by Sweet Home, the city of Sweet Home, to consider during their strategic planning.
Oh, well, you worked for them before, that's, yeah, oh, you would go like that.
And I do, I'm really passionate about that work and so that.
Well, that would be cool.
That is a possibility uh, that I'm open to looking at, but. I really don't have anything. I really don't have anything, which is just fine.
That's good too, though, yeah, you need some time to relax and just.
I heard you're supposed to be a girl.
Yeah, my husband says I'm supposed to teach them how to misbehave.
Well.
Alright, anything else?
No, good.
Alright.